I have not heard from...
Neither.
Okay, it is just a little bit after six o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and get started. Let's call the Johnsons City Council Work Session number 21-24 to order. Send your roll up please.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart.
Here.
Go.
First item that we have on our agenda this evening is a presentation on the Des Moines International Airport Terminal project.
Good evening, I'm Kevin Floyd, the executive director of the...
Go.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much for the opportunity, I'm sorry. Thank you very much for that presentation of today and how...
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'll do it. Kevin, I'll do it.
Okay.
Maybe.
So, we did a, a market analysis, and I'm going to run through these sites very quickly, but we did a market analysis about, well, it ended up second quarter 2018, and I'll get back to that.
You do not.
Go to the next slide.
If you just want to pretend like you are, I'll follow along. How about that?
Okay. The Des Moines International Airport is the state's largest airport. We have 65% of all passenger traffic, well over 50% of all cargo traffic. We are independent from the city of Des Moines because of the airport authority, however, city of Des Moines council does appoint our five board members, but once appointed, they feel are... We are not supported by profit tax at all. We do receive some funding from the federal government, a fair amount of funding, the government to do a trust fund. That's the only major support that we receive. The market study that I mentioned, that we did that in 18, showed that we have 43% of our traffic coming in out of Des Moines, or our visitors coming into the natural area if they're flying into, to Des Moines from either out of state or across the other country to do business in this area. Fifty-seven percent of our residents are approximately within a nine mile radius around Des Moines. We market ourselves as Iowa's airport because of that, because we serve almost an entire state of Iowa. We know it's a lot of the cars moving that now because of a legion of people that started. That study also showed us zip codes where our passengers are located, passengers are coming from, and which zip codes are the largest. And you can see that Johnston is the fourth largest zip code, fourth largest area where passengers are coming from. Just out of curiosity, I did head up Des Moines, and there's about 108,000 passengers on an annual basis coming out of Des Moines, but of course, Des Moines has five or six zip code areas, and we're in Johnston, right? Since we've been in airport authority, we've gone from 19 to 39 stop destination, or passenger traffic has grown over between 35 and 45% compared to what you're shooting from there. That growth is, is caused congestion, the demand has to be issued, we're literally running out of space to park airplanes around the terminal overnight. We have remote parking spots where we're parking airplanes. Once the airline's launched a flight, you have to go get the aircraft and pull it up. That's not on account. However, we own five of those remote parking spots. Around the terminal is full, and we've got two, three airplanes in our remote parking areas overnight today. If you've been to the airport lately, you've seen the new entrance road, that's the factory here in red. The purple or pinkish area there is phase two and three of the entrance road. That will launch this, this spring, when construction is allowed, that's state of the road. You see there's a loop there, and that is the loop that will come around and go underneath and actually become the entrance to parking garage. That orange area there, goldish orange area, is the expansion to the parking garage. It's under design right now. Construction will start there in 2023. We're both the road in that garage. We know that we have the funding ourselves to do those projects, and they definitely will launch. The green area then is the terminal, and that would be the next phase of the parking garage. That would be the next construction project. That would be the launch on this project. This is just, we'll do this quickly. This is the new entrance road, an artist's rendering. The artwork is in, and it's written, that artwork was, is on loan from the Greater Des Moines Art Foundation. They paid for the art itself and just put it on loan in the airport. The next slide is phase two and three of that entrance road. If you stay to the right, that's the length that take you into the parking garage. If you stay to the left, that'll take you on in front of the terminal. This is that loop I was talking about. Comes on around and keeps on moving, the pinky, the white. This is the view. You would see that car is traveling south on tour. That's the view you would see from the tour. This is, there is no design in the terminal. We did do programming, which is nothing more than determining how much space we needed for, for the different phases of passenger processing. But this is an artist's rendering of what the terminal could look like, assuming that it will be glass, steel, and trowel floors down there. Or, right, it is again traveling south on tour. It's, it's what you would see if you travel in south on tour. The airplanes would be very, much bolder to the road than they have in the past. So, the cost on this project, enabling projects on the south side of the hill, the airport has invested so far about $85 million down there. The entrance road is, is left phase two through, through six, because there is spaces total of $29 million, $63 million for the parking garage, leaving terminal and demo of the existing facilities of 398. Total estimated cost of this project today is $575.5 million. That is larger than what was reported originally. Mostly because in 2016, when we reported, we said it was a $500 million project. Last year alone, construction costs went up 13%. They've gone up every year since 2016, generally single digits until last year, and we go 13% last year. So, how are we going to pay for this? There's $18 million worth of private investment, and that's going on today. The airport authority's reserves and our own budget capacity, looking at about $224 million there. We're asking for regional municipalities and counties to help us out. We're with $34 million. But the $34 million does, or is literally helps us leverage to the federal government, to the state government, to help close a $200 million gap. That's what we're using it for. We have had conversations with the state, several conversations with them, and they were very clear that those who benefit the most from this economic development need to be, have some investment in it. And that's how we got to where we are today, asking for the $34 million. This is the stat that we came up with. It's purely by population. The city of Des Moines is who I talked to first, and they committed $10 million, or they thought they could commit $10 million. They're voting tonight. I will tell you that it's on their agenda tonight. I presented at their workshop this morning. And we went from there. The, I was working with city managers, the, at $10 million per population, per capita, that's about $50 per capita for the city of Des Moines. And working with city managers, we thought there should be a spread, so we went down to $30 per capita. Or, or the other communities, he tells me, that below $10,000 population, and you just get it down to $10,000 per capita. Assumption there was the smaller the community, fewer funds that they would have. I've been working with the city manager committee, and that was kind of what they felt that was fair and reasonable. So, you can see there, Johnston, he asked us $677,000, split it over four, over four years. We would have a construction loan on the terminal, and this money wouldn't necessarily, wouldn't be necessary until that loan came due. That's what we would be helping off the construction loan. We go to the next slide. The other thing is, is we don't want this money to just leave the closing funding gap. If we can't get the federal government and the state of Iowa to step forward to help close that gap, we really don't want the money from, from this pilot inside of it. If we had it, we'd have to refund it. Thirty, $34 million is going to be always spent money. This is specific for the terminal. And so, again, in the draft resolution, I think we've submitted to the city manager, we stayed right in there, that if we don't close the funding gap, we can't build the terminal, the money wouldn't be necessary, or we wouldn't be able to refund it. If we do close the funding gap, it would speed the project up. Right now, the timeline on this, the state of beneficial occupancy is, is late in 2028. Because we anticipate a lot of these funds to be coming from the American Rescue Plan Act, there's a timeline on that money. The state is sharing with us that that money has to be spent. If they even said it happens by 2026, that means there has to be substantial construction. We have to be near completion by 2026, by the end of 2026. So, that would bring this project forward by two years, and that will be our congestion problem I will put out coming this week. So, our ask tonight, or my ask of you tonight, is that we have to help secure some funds that we can then leverage at the state and federal levels to finish the completion of the origin of the structure in the terminal. With that, I will take questions, but before I do, I brought support along with me, and I'm sure that the first gentleman, Robert House, does, does any interruptions you this room, so I'll jump over.
Robert House, Bob House, with Cortez Science. And I would start my comments tonight by saying thank you, on behalf of Cortez for our longstanding partnership with the city of Johnston and staff, and public safety especially. You all have helped us grow. You've helped us thrive. You've been with us through a number of name changes, a number of different versions. So, I just wanted to say thank you for that. By the way, a quick introduction, or reintroduction of the company. I know you all drive by it every, every day on your way from home and to work. They probably passed it tonight. Our Cortez campus here is two and a half times larger than any facility we have in the company. We have, when fully staffed, about 2,700 people on campus, employees, 3,000 when you go on the various contractors and consultants that we have onboard. And it helps, it really fuels our seed and our digital applications of our, of our business. We have customers in 150 different countries. We have facilities in 140 of those countries. And every seed starts right here in Johnston. They're taken around the world, often through international flights, to our testing facilities around the globe, as well as a lot of that technology from our digital. Des Moines Airport is critical to our success. It is a way for us to bring people in, and we're attracting and retaining new employees. It's often first and the last thing they see when they come and when they leave. It leaves quite a lasting impression on them. It also is a way that we are bringing a lot of our senior leaders and mid-level leaders through the company. And when they're going home to consider moving their family to Burbank, Johnston, Bryan's area, that lasting impression in the airport is important. We use that airport a lot, and it is vital to what we do to keep our business growing, and I would strongly encourage you, humbly request, that you weigh this consideration tonight, enjoying a lot of other councils sitting around the tables this evening, and help businesses like ours grow globally the way you have us here domestically. So, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilman. My name is Mike Squeazy, and I'm the senior vice president of economic development at the Greater Des Moines Partnership. And we are here in support of the funding request and going throughout the Greater Des Moines metro area. First and foremost, I want to thank you for your support of the partnership and being an excellent economic development partner with Mr. Sanders and his team. We've had a lot of activity in the area, and we really appreciate the support. And Kevin and his team are, are very, very strong supporters of ours and good economic partners as well. Just a couple of points I want to make. In the past two decades, in Greater Des Moines region, we've seen the fastest population and job growth in the Midwest, at least major, mid-major metro area in the Midwest. And we consider it vital for us to keep our airport growing. As Bob mentioned, it's the first impression and the last impression for either people wanting to move their families here, or business executives that are coming to our country and make decisions on, on whether to put a location, put a location on the region. I've kind of mentioned 30 non-stops, and we're like, 30? That's a fantastic number. However, today, I was on a phone call with a large company considering our location in the region, and we didn't have enough sense of air resistance. So, this expansion allows us for additional places to park planes, for additional flights, and as Kevin and his team and, and our team travel country, we meet with every airline that will meet with us and request additional direct flights or new service to the area, and it's great where we have space for it. So, we are definitely in support of, of this expansion as people workforce recruitment, as well as business recruitment efforts in our region. And, you know, we would hope that all of the communities in the metro would see this as a vital asset to, to, to our, our...
Any questions?
Kevin, I'm sure that we have many questions, and I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're going to have more questions than we have time for tonight. I think what you need to understand is we are at the front end of our budgeting process, so we're probably not at a point tonight making any decisions. Obviously, you know, this is not an action item, so we won't, won't be making a decision. I think that there will probably be more questions than we have time for tonight, and so we'll probably want to continue the dialogue in some other manner, whether that is bringing them back, you know, some more conversation, you know, maybe not at a council meeting, but, but, you know, some other time. But I think, you know, probably spend maybe 10 minutes asking questions now, we have other things on our agenda, so.
I was just going to say that, well, beginning the discussion, but I would like to see more data on the passenger growth. Except 35 points, I think, I would say, when we expand, we expand it. Is there other airlines trying to get into this city, or is there, is there lines for, of flights now? I'd like to see that.
I was on a call with, I'm on a committee with other council members from other cities, and one of the questions that came up was a question about whether ARPA funds can be used for this purpose or not. And the, the reason that we were on the call was, post the congressional delegation was an urge maybe to, that Congress might be looking at a bill to, that need to make more flexibility in how we can use our dollars. And so, deciding the airport project is one of those projects that was a little, if you, so have you, have you prepared, have you prepared some sort of legal analysis that shows that you can provide the cities or the states that they are going to use our funds for this?
Well, what I know is that under those entities where the airport is under their jurisdiction, the one, whole county and the state can probably use ARPA funds for this. It is a question whether ARPA funds can be used by, for example, Johnston, because we're not directly under Johnson's jurisdiction. The final ruling, of course, on ARPA isn't out there, isn't, isn't finally shed, and we've got that same question again, contacting Iowa's delegation, saying, you got to help us get to the treasury department and, and make sure that it's as flexible as it possibly can be. It helps for everything that we do goes, it's more flexible, and it's not just the airport. So, I, that's the only, that's the legal analysis that we got today, and the only answer I have on that stage. I can't tell you, but you absolutely could use it.
Okay, so it'd be helpful if you'd get more guidance on that.
We're kind of waiting for the final rule. We're, we're hoping it's flexible. I can't, I appreciate that.
I do, just a couple of very ones. In order to leverage some of those larger sums of money that you indicated, both state and federal, what's the kind of timeframe that you would need commitments from metro and surrounding communities and counties?
Well, in order to get back to the state, I will tell you that tonight, there are three councils voting on the resolution tonight. Des Moines, West Des Moines, and Aim's, and, and, for sure, are voting tonight. Burbank Dell was, his question on that, I'm sure I didn't get a chance to check their agenda. We do have two resolutions back, but the sooner that we get the resolutions, resolutions in place, where we can go to the state and say, we did what you asked, we have support from the communities. Now, let's talk about part dollars from the state. Let's, let's see what the state will affect. They're, they're, they're very supportive, specifically the governor, who wants this project done. She recommends as the economic value of the project to the state of Iowa. We have talked about very large numbers coming from the state, but I don't have anything in my unit, and I don't have any guarantees, absolute guarantees from the state, other than they want to participate, and we will make sure that we can keep supporting, supporting them.
I'm going to be very blunt to my next question, and that is hearing from you, but also knowing that, that there is this call for regionality of support in order to leverage that. Is the airport authority willing to consider changing how it board the structure to include more of the communities of what you're asking to, to make these commitments?
Well, it's not an airport authority decision. That is absolutely a city of Des Moines decision. We are established under 338, and under 338, it's, it's the controlling entity, and it can be multiple, multiple communities here, a regional authority, but it has to be reestablished, and of course, the city of Des Moines would have to agree with that. I would ask for $677,000, who's that, by a seat on, on a facility that is estimated to be, you know, $6 billion, with the runways and the buildings and everything on it. That's, that's the estimate of the value of the airport, $6 billion. More importantly, that discussion would probably date, well, we know, we have examples, whether it's Waterworks, or, or Art, or other, other entities where they, they've talked about legalization and those discussions in four, five, six years. And, you know, with Waterworks, that's, that's not even, it's been four years, and there are no cost closure to, to, other than that one, or the other, than they were four years ago. The money will evaporate. The money has to be spent. If you look at the article rules, the money has to be spent after 26. So, that would literally stop the state from using this class.
Mayor, I have one brief question.
Okay.
I work up at Iowa State University, and you know, the, the, there's kind of a corridor building between Des Moines and Ames. I have a cousin who was retiring from the Pentagon Colonel, and she and her husband were trying to decide where to live, and one of their, one of their decision makers was how close to a, a regional airport would their, would the town be? So, they're looking at Ames, because they want to work at Ames Lab, and they've decided that the airport here in Des Moines is close enough. So, when I look at the scale that you have of all those other communities that are benefiting from this airport expansion, wouldn't overlook Ames. They have quite a few conferences there. They draw quite a bit of air travel to that city, and, you know, the College of Vet Med is premier. So, I don't know where that comes in, and maybe it's part of the state give, but maybe Ames needs to be the top tier.
Yeah, we'll tell you a story, county and Ames were working together on that, to, to try to get a meeting with both the county and, and the city.
Kevin, the $575 million, is that today's estimate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
So, what will it be two years from now?
Well, if we have inflation that, that continues like we've seen, in, in the eight to nine, 10%, we can inflate it two years from now, we can inflate it by 12%.
Well, we can expect that it will definitely go up, you know, give you additional dollars. And that doesn't, that doesn't begin to include the maintenance and...
The maintenance, operation, operation in the airport, we are self-supporting, our revenues, going to maintenance.
The $300 million of state and federal funds, what, what is that, $300 million? The $300 million that you're hoping to get from state and federal infrastructure dollars, what, what, what makes up that $300 million? Infrastructure dollars, ARPA dollars?
Well, first and foremost will be the infrastructure and jobs act from that. We think that, what I know positively, there's part of that is the equation, and over the next five years, we will see $27 million out of that equation, which I'm sure a lot of people will go for the terminal. There's a competitive side of that, specifically for terminal, for, for airports the size of Des Moines, which there's about $7 million. There's a billion dollars that we can compete for. We think that we should be able to see about $30 million out of there. And then there's another 20 or 25 million coming out of the normal airport improvement program that the terminal would be able to look for. So, it's $70 to $75 million that we think we can come up with out of the, the infrastructure bill. There are DLT dollars that are eligible as well, that are competitive, hoping that we can get in front of Secretary Bujec and, and secure some of those dollars, or at least get in line for some of those dollars. And then, and then the rest of it is going to have to come from the state. And that is the level of discussion that we've had with the state thus far, has been in that $200 to $250 million range. But again, I have nothing, I have nothing in writing from that. And, and in large part, I'm sure that the ARPA rules, when they finalize, are going to impact that decision one way or another.
The other question that I have for this evening, and, and like I said, I think this conversation is probably going to continue, as we're, you know, considering this request and working through our own budget, because we have a lot of needs in our community as well. Have you considered going to the legislature and asking for your own taxing authorities similar to DART, other than going, you know, coming to the communities and asking them to find money for in their budgets?
The Iowa Code Taxing Authorities cap at $27,000, and it's only on the member entity. So, in this case... So in this case, right now, today, because we are Des Moines Airport Authority, not a regional authority, it would only be on tax base of the city of Des Moines. It's been a little while since I've helped them into that, but with your $27,000,000 you're looking at, somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000 a year.
But that could be changed.
By everything.
At the legislature. Yeah, I I I just, my, I just was curious whether or not you even consider, consider taking that vote rather than coming to communities.
Well, I'm coming to the communities in large part because the state said you have to get support from the communities, those who are gonna benefit from all this goodness, need to have money invested in that, in large part, why we're coming to the communities.
Any other questions?
So as I'm looking at this, it looks actually wanting to have you build the first terminal and tear down the existing one?
Correct.
So there's, is there a plan, uh, phase two or phase three, to add additional terminals on the road? I mean, when, when is, the way this is laid out, it doesn't look like it's just put in a new one and tear out the old one and sit.
Well, there's room for expansion, you know, anticipating growth, there is room for expansion with this new terminal, can continue to wrap around. So ultimately, you can get 27 gates in this area. Uh, I guess it's gonna be a while, you know, for Des Moines to see 27 gates, but but there is room for that. So, uh, there is right now no plan for for that expansion that'll be based on demand.
Any other questions, Council?
How many gates are included in this, as built out?
We want to have it expanded originally. The original plan called for 14 gates, uh, to be expanded in 2040 to 18 gates. Um, our our growth has been so rapid, and and, uh, we expected that portion of to grow, to continue to grow for for a few more years at least, that there's 18 gates in the plan. We just eliminated, as you want, in this too.
And you currently have 10 to 12?
We currently have 12. Uh, some of them are restricted in use from the origins on what we currently have.
You have other questions, Council?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. Thank you, guys. The next item on the on the agenda is a presentation by Metro Waste Authority.
Good evening, thank you for being here tonight, and my name is Kathy Gray, I'm Community Relations Manager with Metro Waste Authority, and also with me is our Deputy Director, Michael McQuaid. I am here tonight to share just briefly about an RFP process that we went through for the collection of garbage, um, garbage and recycling in all of the metro communities that we manage contacts for. I've been a Metro Waste Authority since 2017, but we've actually been managing contacts for well over 20 years, so spend a lot of quality time with these types of documents and services. Um, we issued an RFP back in September, and we were very pleased to receive four competitive responses to that, through from local haulers who have experience with our agency and your community, and then one national bidder who lives near to the area. As a reminder, this is merely a recommendation based on our years of experience managing these types of services and working with residents, um, but it's certainly up to the council, um, to make your recommendations for your cities. Um, after thorough review of the bid responses that were evaluated against eight criteria for everything from pricing to experience to customer experience over the years and a reputation in the metro, we're pleased to recommend ASI as the garbage and yard waste hauler for City Johnson, and then Waste Management as for recycling haulers. So as a reminder, those are the current haulers for those services for the City of Johnson, but there would be some nice hot new here. Um, this, again, this is a recommendation, um, based on our experience with these haulers and their responses to the bid. Uh, a current recycling contract has been in place for more than 10 years, that is currently during the revenue management. And so as you can imagine, any service or bill that's been in place for more than 10 years, the price point usually changes and evolves over that period of time. And so what we did see in these bid responses is an increase over what we are currently paying today, because we have those contracts in place for those so many years, which has been wonderful from a service model and consistency, we were maintaining pricing structure that was from a past model that obviously showed an increase over that period of time. So this recommendation does come with an increase of $2.84 per month for residents for garbage and yard and recycling, for a total of $15.05 per month for garbage and recycling collection per household. So with that, that's kind of an overview, but Metro and I are happy to answer any questions that the council has. So we're gonna do just.
Council, any questions?
I do, Mayor. Uh, the the first question has to do with, there was a statement in the memo that was provided to council that that included that no one entity would be able to occupy more than two groups, so to speak, or be suggested or recommended for more than two groups. Can you elaborate on that in twofold? One, why that policy exists and how that pertains? And then also, tell us a little bit more about the end groups and how Johnson falls into the group it is.
Sure, so I'm ready to answer your questions in reverse order, if that's okay, but I'm happy to answer them all. So we met with haulers for about a year off and on, um, as we constructed this RFP. And the reason we did that is because, you know, we have a lot of experience with them and managing these services and these contracts. But that doesn't mean that the model that's been in place for 10 plus years is the model that's best served for today. And we really wanted to make sure that the agreement that we put together and the reflects that we put out into the universe really represented the best opportunity for competitive responses. And so in those interviews, we really heard from haulers about the optimal routing efficiency that would equate to lower cost of the bid. And what we heard from them is we need a full route, we need 800 to 1,000 stops per day for a Monday through Friday schedule. And so then, from there, we took the 21 cities that we manage contacts more and said, of, you know, the house counts in each city, which one we bundle together gets us to that closest to optimal number that we possibly can. And so if you compare them, one, two, and three, they were all right around 17,000 households per zone, and so that's what the metals were determined. And the reason for the limitation of no one caller being more than more than two zones is a couple of reasons. One, we have a lot of great local haulers who we have longstanding relationships with partners with, they do a lot of great services, and we really wanted to ensure their opportunity to maintain and protect their marketplace. These contracted contracts have a term of seven years initially, with two, three years at the end. But that's a long stretch of time, but if we just had one caller monopolize all of it, those other ones aren't gonna be here anymore when it's time to protect what we did again. In addition to that, with our longstanding with each of these callers, we have experience with overloading one or another in different times throughout the past, and we just really felt like it maintains a better balance if you can spread the business throughout.
Can I follow up on on that? You had mentioned that the initial contract phases for seven years, so does that mean that these rates would be in effect for seven years?
Great question. So the contract includes an opportunity for pricing investment formula, and we all know the prices of fuel and wages and all of that changes over the years. And so in the contract, it tells out that we base these annual increases on the Consumer Price Index at certain percentage intervals. But the garbage and yard waste contract specifies that no rate can be more than 4% in one year. We do have that stat in there. There are times that the rates go up, there are times the rates go down, but we do have that stat for sure in it.
One last question for now. I I there are several more, but one of the other council members, perhaps kind of explored this, um, when you kind of mentioned in the evaluation of all of your bidders, and there were four bidders that already understood you correctly, um, there were several different criteria which you used. Did any of the criteria which you used include any kind of sustainability measures weighed in with regard to how these companies operate, uh, with regard to fuels used in the trucks, or with regard to the routing that they do and scheduling, those types of things?
Yes, so for the first time, our, um, request for proposal included requirements related to technology to not only support the customer care that we're able to provide residents, in addition to that, the monitoring of contamination or power use of cars when you're cleaning, they said, that are being selected, regardless of which service line that's through. And then, um, finally, the recycling contract, we, after our evaluation, determined that it was in the best interest of the program and the service for residents to award all private recycling communities to one caller, which is Waste Management, because their proposal included advanced technology to not only end the contamination and monitor that, and really capture that the curbside or as it's been into the truck, that logs the address in the moment, takes the picture, that picture is analyzed by people that then can generate a letter that's sent directly to a person's phone that says, hey, we really appreciate your efforts here, but they're a little bit misguided, please don't put X in the car anymore. Um, things like that can really help us support the longevity and sustainability of that program. And then in addition to that, in the ways of fuel, their trucks run on D M G.
Questions, Council?
If you just, I, um, if there's, this, this includes most of the cities in the metro, but it doesn't include a couple of your cities, like I think Ains is not included, Ains is a little bit, but their rate ended up being quite a bit higher, is that right? Can you talk a little bit about how Ains' rate compares to this rate in the back to now?
Absolutely. So the city of Ains was part of the consideration for bid responses. If you, in your spare time read the RFP, there are actually seven zones that were bid on. One through three had about 17,000 households per contract, and zones four through six had about 25,000 households per zone. And the reason that is because Ains did consider as a community whether or not they wanted to go towards a consolidated collection model like the City of Johnson had. They ultimately decided not to go with that model, which then put us in consideration of zones one through three instead of four through seven. In that evaluation and that, um, conversation and analysis with the city of Ains, one of the things that was shared was an informal survey that that they did among their office staff, and the average resident in Ains paid about $15 per household for garbage alone. Because like I said, they do not have a consolidated collection model for garbage or yard waste, so their residents are choosing an independent caller to hire on their own, kind of like how you sign up for cable TV or a cell phone claim. And so on average, their residents are paying $15 just for trash, and then yard waste, they have to figure out on their own and recycling it through the. And also, in context as well, there is another city in the metro that we assist with private recycling, uh, but they handle their trash in their yard waste contract directly with the caller who like the City of Johnson used to, and they're seeing 67% increase in their maximum payroll. So unfortunately, although what we are recommending does represent an increase, we are seeing the fair market value rates, we compare them with other metro that are similar in size to us throughout the Midwest, and in addition to that, all three local haulers, they're basically 20% of each other. And so that really shows us that there's a lot to be consumed in our analysis of what the true cost is to provide the services to residents.
I saw in the memo that Mike sent to the city administrators that primary reason for the price increase was due to wages, which makes sense to me. Can you give us just a little more information on this? When our constituents ask us, why are rates, why are, you know, why are prices going up? And we tell them wages, and we can give a little more, a little more detail on that.
I know Kathy could have gone that whole night by herself, she's got the sandwiches and eating around, but, uh, since it was my memo, yeah, wages are one of the major factors. We're seeing the CDLs, uh, which the individual, the rates of, for them going up from $15, $17 to over $20, uh, for the locals, and they're still fighting, uh, on the CDL drivers, adding $2,000, $3,000 bonuses on top of that coming in, uh, and then sending them some, some of them, a lot of them through CDL courses. The wages and expenses, and today, I I would say it's it's part of the time, right? With everything going on and the increased rates, that is part of it, uh, the wages are a major part of it, uh, fuel is a major part of it, uh, also the cost of the trucks and the steel is a major part of it, that's why the companies or haulers are really asking for a direction right now of of where to go. Some of them will have to buy new trucks. As I talked about, the local haulers, uh, in a way that they're local to us, there are, one of them is a national, of those three, one of them is a regional, one of them is a local. Now, one of them that did bid consideration is also a national, um, from out of state. But I think the bidding was very aggressive, uh, we had some poor break bids and interest, we tried to woo another national company in, uh, it was just a little too late for them to come into it. And then being such tight bids shows you, we are right where the market dictates. Uh, so I think little of, of it, was stressed out of 4%, that's unheard of right now in the industry to be able to cap 4% on anybody, let alone on a seven-year contract. But it was one of our demands that was non-negotiable, was the 4%. Uh, some of that came from, Jim, uh, you know, pushing stuff like that kind of to us and saying, you know, the energy have to have that consistency and an expectation over the years of how to budget. But we're pretty happy with that whole process, but, you know, wages have gone up quite a bit. We're not, we're seeing it in one half of our agency, uh, but the other one's about to come, so the union's locked in for another two years on wages, but the other side, as you all know, uh, is getting very creative to get new employees in to on retention as well, lengthy answer for you.
That's great, that's great. Any other questions, Council? Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
The last item on the agenda of the city is the government budget plan.
I'm Mayor Council, um, I'm going to ask all the local financial planners, the financial planners, and, um, so we met with the Finance Committee on Friday to go through this in detail, um, but we worked with TruSet and her staff, um, Jim and his staff to kind of put together the plan of finance for the CFP. Really, this is specific to what they've been funding property taxes, and what is the debt service, so that everybody has an understanding of, um, and how these programs are being paid along with the term of the debt, and what are all the different things that go on. So this first sheet, I prepared, uh, is it on?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so I'm just gonna talk, uh, pretty quickly through each of these columns and others, yeah, it's not wrong with it, it's wrong with it, but, uh, this is what I consider, uh, the the geo-debt capacity and it's the legal debt capacity in the city. This is kind of a yes or no thing for me for the city of, for the CFP within the legal constraints and within the debt and the policy. So that number in yellow is still pretty familiar, but it it's what we put, the one one, um, the January 1st, 2021 valuation, the city R assess valuation, so, um, based on what's on the Polk County Assessor's website right now, the City of Johnson is valuing at $22,000,000, $130,000, $150,000, that's all the taxable property within the City of Johnson. That represents about a 6.9% growth over the prior year.
If I just send that through, so, so that would not include, I think, like a property like a child, sir, does that have an assessed valuation, you know, doesn't have a taxable valuation?
If it's tax exempt, then it does not have assessed valuation, so like churches, government buildings, it could not be included in that.
Right.
Um, so the city can leverage up to 5% of that value, so if you multiply that to $1.1 billion by 5%, you get to $155,688,000. That's the legal debt limit of the city. Um, and you can see that that grew about 10 million over last year. That was, uh, a better growth than we had planned, we'd been planning around 4%, so it was less than 4%. Um, so the the self-imposed debt limit, you know, debt management policy has a 75% cap, but it has several exceptions. Um, the publicly voted, voter-approved projects such as the public safety building does not, does not count against that, um, 75% of the town center does not count against that, and the Merle Hay redevelopment, whatever. So you have enough debt that is not counted against your 75%, but your actual legal limit is the constraint for these purposes. The salmon-colored, um, column is the debt that's voter-approved, so voter-approved or a strategic priority of council, so you can see, um, after the bond issues that we've had this this fall, you're at $41,575,000, the bond is voter-approved. fall, you're at 41,575,000 bond is voter approved debt. And then, so I, sorry, I skipped a couple of columns. The geo-debt, the 92, there's 97,284. That's debt that's not voter approved or not strategic priority. So that's just, you know, that's what I'm providing with 75% by nature of the emphasis. And if you remember, we did one bond issue that was subject annual preparation. That was about six or seven million. And we did that so we wouldn't have to do the town center, the subject annual preparation, because that was a much bigger bond issue. And that's that annual geo-debt column, where all you have to do is count the annual payment on that. You pay a little higher interest rate on that debt, but it made room to fit in the other, the town center project. And then your rebate agreements have to come against your debt. So as we sit right now, the city has 142,531,054 dollars of debt outstanding, which is pushing right up against the that legal debt limit, fiscal 22. So this next bond issue that we do, we will close after July 1, so that we've got the revaluations, the payoffs, and debt on June 1, and allows you to fund the 2023 CIP debt. So right now, bring someone to the CIP, we're planning on doing 6.2 million, we'll publicly sell it in May, and close, you know, the first week of July, so the city has that. Assuming all public hearings and all of that stuff for credit. So then you can see that on the yellow column, you effectively build in everything the city plans to borrow in the CIP as it sits today. So next year will be 18.2 million, 18.3. The following year will be 11.6, 8.7, and then another 8.7. You can see, that's what's in the CIP. And if you scroll kind of all the way to the right, you can see that even though you're bringing on more debt, the column that says percentage of legal debt limit, we're at, we're at 97 to 86% right now. Next year, when we start the fiscal year after you issue the 6.2 million, it'll be at 87. So you pick up that $10 million to grow, you pay some debt off, and so you're starting to make ground up. And then if you go down a few years, then we get back under that 75% of the legal government. So any questions about this first page? It's really kind of a, I built it in to make sure it works. And if it doesn't work, I'd call Teresa and say, sorry, David.
She probably calls.
So the next page, this is more of how are we going to pay for it? You know, where is the money going to come from? And so this sheet, the far left column, is the taxable valuation. So this takes that 3.1 billion and then applies the residential rollback, commercial industrial rollbacks. And so you can see up the 3.1 billion, 1,890,000, 890 million is actually taxable. So residential properties only pays tax on about 54% of the properties, you know, stuff like that. So the residential rollback went down, right? About 2%. So you can see, the city's growth from taxable perspective only grew about 3.7%. Because if it's to the assessed value, grew about 6.9%. And that directly related to the rollback, the change in the rollback. So the constraint that we're solving for here is, is that tax rate per thousand. And we're trying to keep that stable over time at 234. And so the way we were doing that is we're using the lost abatement money to kind of help balance that out. One of the things you discussed at the finance committee level in, in pretty good detail was, you know, what else is competing for those lost funds? You know, what are the trade offs between, you know, you're really buying down the tax rate with the loss? You know, if you didn't transfer it, then you would have the raised property taxes. And so by choosing to transfer it into the debt service, you're buying down the tax rate. It's really delivering on the, the promise that, you know, these after property actually leaves. But you can see here, the abatements, if you go all the way to the total, kind of, the total resources, that's kind of the total debt payment. And as you can see, you're living about 2.5 million in taxes, you're bringing in 5.8 million from TIP, 2.6 million from loss, about 200,000 in water, 140,000 in sewer, 430,000 from stormwater. So you're using those other funds, you know, to, to help pay the general obligation debt that you would otherwise have to levy taxes for. And so then the, the yellow columns in this page is the debt limit. It's not the debt outstanding, it's how much, how much you have to, have to pay annually for those projects. And, you know, we start with 10-year debt, and we try to fit everything within the 10-year debt. And then if there are bigger road projects, you typically have to go out longer. So you can see in 2024, it's got some bigger projects in there, so we're going out, you know, a couple of years. But most, most of them, these first two, we've been at 10 and then 12. And we're, and you can see, I, I like the, in the tax rate for thousands, we're above the, the 234. So we're either going to have to see additional taxable valuation growth there, and, or we're going to have to change the structure of that. We'll have to do something in the future. But this first bond issue fits, you know, for the 10-year loan. And I've got some pretty conservative interest rates in there. But as we move forward, we'll either have to space out some projects, or we'll have to, we're after that, or we'll have to wait. Or we'll have to increase the tax rate for the, we'll talk to sales tax abatement. So there's lots of others, city control, that, from what I can tell, the CIP is manageable. We're not making up bounds. You start to get over the, that 8 million dollar, you're paying off on your, and you're going to be having trouble. We tend to go on all of the resources that you're using to make a debt back. So, just stop there. Let me see if there are questions. There are about two minutes or so. Are there any questions?
Council, any questions?
When you said the total 8 million, where is that? What's coming in?
Yeah. And it's, it's hard because you can't see it because, but if you look at the outstanding general obligation debt, that 13.3 million includes principal and interest. And, you know, I'm talking about principal. And so I have it on another direction here.
So is that new, that's, is that how much you're paying off this year? Or is that how much?
That's how much you're, that's how much you do each year. The outstanding payment debt. So that in 2022, which is this year, you'll, you'll have payments of 12 million and 496. And then next year is when you really start to really see the, you know, the town center and some of the bigger projects.
Anything more, Matt? Council, any questions? We have one, Matt. One. Going, going. Thanks, Matt. That brings us to the end of the agenda for the work session.
Thanks, Matt.
We started with the council meeting, and we need to take a break, so we'll be done with it.